We'll call this meeting to order, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, my nation under God indivisible, with all due and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Trustee Paulie. Trustee Laffin. Clerk Palavich here. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Crow.
Here.
Trustee Reiner.
Here.
Supervisor Skibby.
Here. Uh, moving forward into the agenda, uh, there is one addition under new business item one, uh, which is a one line budget adjustment for ninety cents.
Well, we just add it when we do the motion.
Yeah, so other than that, um, are there any corrections, substitutions? Additions to the agenda? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
I'll make that motion.
A motion on the table, is there support?
Support.
It's been moved and supported for the discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. Agenda has been adopted, uh, this is the first opportunity for public comment, if there's any public comment, uh, please stand that is pertains to the business items on this agenda, please stand at the podium and state your name to the record.
Mark Johnson, retired fire chief from Connecticut, recently moved to the district. I spoke on this issue in May, um, when you first brought up the idea of consultant, and I'd like to reiterate, um, you had two studies done. One in, uh, two thousand and seven, if I'm not mistaken, and the other in two thousand and twenty-one. Uh, paid fifteen thousand dollars for this one, money that complained we don't have. Um, both those reports led to suggestions and recommendations, and to the best I can figure out, none of which have been followed. Um. I think the issue here is making some decisions. Been kicking the can down the road apparently for years. And we won't make the strong decisions apparently that need to be made. I think we need a facilitator, not a consultant, someone who can bring the stakeholders together, this board, the fire department, members of the public business community, all the the interested stakeholders in the community. And get them to sit around the same table and talk about the issues, this is very important issues, and it's life and death stuff that we're dealing with here. And I, I think that just having another list of recommendations, which we probably won't follow because one side or the other side or somebody doesn't like them. Um, i- is not the way to go. Um. We need someone who can bring us together and talk about the strategic plan for the fire department, once, once there's a plan, we can move forward, we have the expertise in-house, largely in the chief and his staff. To do the research that needs to be done and raise the issues that need to be discussed, it's, we don't need to pay for expertise, we need to pay for some who can bring us together. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Are there any comments online? Seeing none, moving forward to the consent agenda. Is there? Anything that needs to be pulled from the consent agenda for further discussion?
Just a question.
Yes.
Was there really three hundred meetings?
No, there wasn't. Just making sure that everybody's reading. But, close. Uh, with that being stated, uh, I'll entertain a motion, uh, to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
We have a motion on the table, is there support, or? Been moved and supported, uh, trusty left. The support, um, for their discussion. Seeing none, roll call please.
Clerk Palavich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers, yes. Trustee Crow.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Paulie.
Yes.
And that's still laughing.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. And moving forward into old business, uh, is just that consultants, um. It was per the last board meeting, uh, but I was given direction, uh, and I've come back with a listing of the same consulting services, uh, that I did back in March, and also was able to find a, a more regional, uh, consultant, and that is Chief Rich Marinucci retired. And as you see within, uh, all the documents, it is my recommendation, uh, to move forward, uh, with Mr. Marinucci's, uh, services. Not to exceed ten thousand dollars, but we actually do have Mr. Marinucci online, if there's any additional questions uh, for him in regards to this matter. Uh, could you unmute, uh, Mr. Marinucci, please? Mr. Marinucci, can you hear us, sir?
Yes, I can.
Okay. Thank you for your time this evening, and, uh, for the time that you took to put together a quote for services, uh, would you, uh, like to address the board, bring them up a little, maybe a little synopsis of yourself and your background, sir?
Well, uh, I have about forty-eight years in the business, uh, bulk of it was served in Farmington Hills. And also was a fire chief in Northville Township and White Lake Township. Uh, I was president of International Association Fire Chiefs, also was, uh, served seven months as a chief operating officer of the U.S. Fire Administration. Uh, of, uh, my education is a master's degree from Eastern Michigan and a couple of bachelor's degrees. Uh, I've been engaged in the fire service, uh, for a long time. I've had many opportunities to offer opinions on uh, fire departments, not only in this state, but, uh, in different parts of the country. Uh, I take a different approach, uh, I think that most do. Uh, but one thing you get from me is, uh, bone honesty, I have no reason not to tell you what I think. And I will give you my opinion, and then you can decide, I do believe that all fire protection is local. And, uh, it's up to you to decide what level of protection you want, I can offer, uh, instances of uh, examples, um, locally and, and across the country that, uh, uh, give you different choices to make, but ultimately it becomes your choices, the people that live in that community.
Are there any questions for Mr. Marinucci?
Well, I just one question for you, or at least maybe a comment, you can, you can add to it, um, what we are faced with in El pena township is nothing new. And I'm, I'm wondering if, if the, the things that we are struggling with, I assume we've had s- some conversation with supervisor as to our uh, dilemmas and concerns and just funding issues, uh. Uh, probably nothing that you haven't otherwise heard, uh, just about everywhere, accurate?
That's correct, I think most everything comes back down to ability to pay.
Yes, and so that would be precisely what our issue would be is just the ability to pay, I'm sure you've, uh, had discussions about, um, our, our municipal, or excuse me, our, the people in this township have, uh, uh, voted down millages, and so, um, we just have a small pie, po- pocket of money to deal with, and you feel you can work within those parameters?
Uh, it's generally how we, it comes in, if everything is running smooth up in your community, you wouldn't be looking for somebody to come in and give you an outside opinion. Uh, that's what I would offer, uh, oftentimes, uh, it's sometimes just a fresh set of eyes can look at something and say, maybe if you try this, maybe if you try that, and, and throw a few things out there for your consideration, so uh, that's the issue, I think, uh, your, your circumstances aren't, uh, different than many, many fire departments. Uh, it's a, it's a labor-intensive business that, uh, takes human beings to do for the most part, and, uh, so it's trying to find out how do you maximize, uh, your bang for the buck.
Have you had much experience outside of the, uh, areas in which you live, in other words, more, more rural areas where there may not be a significant workforce that, that you could just uh, try to tap into?
I just completed a job in Groveland County now, while it's in Oakland County, uh, Michigan's quite a rural area, very, uh, rural for, for lack of that, uh, better word, uh, they have, uh, low density, a lot of, uh, state property and so forth, so, uh, they struggle exactly with what you're doing right now, and that's, uh, trying to find ways to pay for the best possible service.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Marinucci? As I mentioned, I do. It's my recommendation to this board, uh, to move forward with the development services of Mr. Marinucci, not to exceed ten thousand dollars, the allocation for this expenditure per my recommendation is to utilize ten thousand dollars of ARPA monies. And that way it does not have a negative impact, uh, to either the general fund or public safety. So it is my recommendation to move forward with a contract for services with Mr. Marinucci.
Yes, I'd like to make that motion.
We have a motion on the table, is there support?
I'll support it.
It's been moved and supported for their discussion.
Uh, I noticed on here there were two uh, VFIS. And
ECIS.
Fitch. What I
ECIS is another one of the
Okay. But I didn't see, unless I, unless I just didn't look close enough, I didn't see a, an actual proposal presented for us to look at.
So you got so to clarify that point, um, these, those companies are out of state, um, and the, the proposal for services for even the March conversations, uh, were in the northern aspects of twenty thousand dollars for, uh, consulting services plus logistical costs. Given the fact that the nearest, I think is S E S C I is based out of Pennsylvania. Um. You know, that north of twenty is going to be added upon for labor or for the logistical costs, the state, et cetera, et cetera.
Would Mr. Marinucci come on site?
Yes.
Talk to our members of our fire department, talk to members of the board.
Well, I, Mr. Marinucci, I don't want to speak for yourself, sir, so would you please, that's a question for you.
Only way to do this is come up and talk to the folks in the community, and one of the things I would ask is a list of people of interest and, uh, try to put together, uh, uh, the folks that can offer some input and, and provide that information, so it's more than just looking at, uh, your data and, um, any of your reporting that you've had, but it's talking to people to get a flavor for the community.
Just for clarification, does that include the, the fire chief and the fire department staff and staff?
Typically, I would, uh, recommend that we talk to the fire chief, probably the union president, any other informal leaders in the fire department. Uh, and any, uh, members of the community, maybe at large, uh, business community potentially, uh, that have, uh, an interest in the fire and, uh, municipality. Uh, and of course, obviously, any, uh, of the board members that, uh, want to provide some input.
Any other question?
If we all wanted to provide our input, we could all.
Okay, I think we all should.
I do too.
Been a long time coming. So with that said, uh, we have a motion, we have support, if there's no other discussion. Yes, trustee Reiner.
Well, in, in some respects, I, I agree with Mr. Johnson, who spoke from the public podium. Um, that we've had studies before. Uh, we've, I've looked at them, it's been a while now since I've looked at the, the one at least, but the, uh, I mean, we know what was recommended then, I but I'm in the minority in believing that that's still a valid option is what was recommended then, but we haven't, uh, we haven't been able to do that because we have a division on this board of what to do, so if we're heading to the same kind of place, all we've done is, uh, got a new thing that says, yeah, me too, but, uh, so that's my, my trouble with this is that, uh, I, I, I just, I don't necessarily agree with Mr. Johnson on, on his, uh, suggestion, but, uh, whether or not we have a consultant or whether we should just look at relook at what we had before is what I what I'm wondering now. Uh, part of I think the, the, uh, problem is that no, I don't need to go, I'll just leave that alone, uh, that, I guess that's all I have to say, I still may vote for the consultant, but we, we need to move somewhere, get something done.
Yeah, so we've actually had one consulting service, two thousand and seven, it was Raymond Robson, uh, Rhino Schultz was not a consultant, he gave his, uh, position statement, uh, as to, uh, looking into things at that point in time, but we've actually only had one consultant.
So that's the Raymond Robson's one I remember seeing.
And two thousand and seven is quite a long time, I've had some, a better grasp of economics.
Studies have to be redone every seven to ten years.
They keep
To be that, right, so.
Yes, I have one more question.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Marinucci. Can, will you be able to, in this proposal that you're going to send us, tell us in, in complete details of what the fire department is able to do with the funds that they have available, or how many more funds it would take to do what they not what they, what the board would like to see have done, is that what you're proposing that you can do?
Well, that's what we try to do exactly, uh, that is to say, here's what you're willing to pay, how do you maximize the benefit from the willingness to pay for the service? There's an understanding, you, you know, you can go the whole gamut in a fire business, you can have, uh, two guys in a pickup truck and a fire extinguisher, and you can have, uh, a firefighter on every street corner, and somewhere in between that is going to be what you're going to be able to do, so it's trying to figure that piece out of what you can afford. Uh, you obviously aren't going to be able to do some things that a highly densely populated municipality can do because you don't have enough tax base to do that, so the idea is to say, what is the maximum benefit we can get from our fire department with what the resources are that are presented, so we try to look at it, you know, from a local perspective, uh, versus, uh, trying to uh, fit you into some, uh, you know, round peg in a square hole or something like that.
Thank you. Seeing no further discussion? Roll call please.
Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Crow.
No.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Paulie.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Clerk Palavich, yes. Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Thank you very much for your time this evening, sir, if you want to stay on, you're more than welcome, otherwise, uh, we'll conduct our, our paperwork and get that to you, and then, uh, get you points of contact to, uh, start your, your task at hand, sir. Okay, moving forward, uh, to new business, uh, before you have a, a list of budget adjustments. Um. Barely extensive list of budget adjustments. So are there any questions to the budget adjustments that are presented?
Where does the ninety cents fall in?
Oh, we need to add.
Uh, that fell, yeah, so that would be the addition, that was somehow, uh, a transposed number from the junior high Thunder Bay liaison officer. Um, came up in our fourth quarter as ninety cents short somehow. Um. So that is in, uh, public safety, but a pass through through the general.
It's the general end of it that needs the budget adjustment.
The revenue aspect, right. And then into the transfer to the public safety.
It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be revenue, it's an expense in the general fund.
Yeah. So ninety cents in the expense for the general fund to pay for the transfer to the public safety for the junior, for the sheriff's department. Yeah. It's two oh, yeah.
It's not two oh five.
No, it's one oh, one zero zeros, it's in the revenue, it's, oh, sorry, it's actually in that weird funky
It's an expenditure.
It's an expense.
It's the next page.
No, that was the younger of those one.
No, back up page. Four, towards the bottom. The next page, fire. It's zero four zero.
Would it be easier if we just kicked in fifteen or twenty cents?
Yeah, somehow is
Okay, it's, um, one oh one
Zero zeros.
Three, three, six, nine, nine, five, zero, one, zero, general fund contribu- contribution for Thunder Bay Junior High Liaison Officer, we need to add ninety cents to that. Where do you want to take it from?
Again.
You want to take it from the clerk's office?
Yeah. Ten cents and the odd man out on rock, paper, scissors.
I'm just going to take it from professional and contractual services from the clerk's office.
Okay. So with that addition and correction to the budget adjustments, are there any other questions? Seeing no questions, uh, is, I'll entertain a motion to move forward with the budget adjustments as, uh, corrected.
So moved.
So we have a motion on the table, is there support?
Or?
It's been moved and supported, uh, and further discussion. Seeing none, roll call please.
Trustee Crow.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Paulie.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Clerk Palavich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Moving forward, um, our February twenty-sixth meeting, uh, is needing to be canceled, um, and due to the charter, uh, we actually have to conduct business once per every month. Uh, so it is proposed, um, that we cancel, not only cancel the gen- or the February twenty-sixth meeting, but reconvene on three different proposed dates, and so I look for a quorum, uh, to one of these three dates, I already previously forecasted to, uh, Steve and Cash, uh, February sixth, the thirteenth, or the fourteenth. Um, this is only two weeks out, so anticipation of conducting, uh, any principal businesses mitigated, is just by statute, we have to conduct a board meeting. So are there one of those dates that work better for your
February is no good.
Yeah.
Six won't work for me.
Six won't work for you?
So the thirteenth or fourteenth in my proposal, a daytime meeting.
A daytime meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean
Not the fourteenth for me. That's my last date.
Is this just a meeting to just it's an eight-minute meeting or something?
Well, this is a regular board meeting.
It's a regular meeting.
Right, but it's actually three weeks away.
Three weeks out, so.
The thirteenth will be, I had to make the fourteenth.
Okay, so does the thirteenth work for you at eleven AM?
At eleven AM, and what day?
Or what time would work? It is sad, is it?
I'm trying to find it, this thing is.
Is, is the, uh, law still about zooming in, just?
Yes.
Yeah.
You can, you can participate in, uh, public comment, you can't give any set insight, you cannot vote, your attendance doesn't count. Unfortunately.
Thirteen, so
The thirteenth is a Tuesday.
What time would the meeting be?
Uh, as long as we have a quorum right now, I'd rather just conduct it during daytime hours.
Eleven AM.
Eleven AM?
I will, okay.
Okay.
Russ won't be here?
At all for the whole day, or?
From eleven to twelve thirty, I'm on a a champion zone.
Well, I'd rather have it after three o'clock or two thirty. Oh, that's fine with that.
So then, how about the thirteenth at three PM?
But, that'll work.
Okay. So I'd entertain a motion to reset the, uh, and this is a typical, but we
So I have a question for Tim about this, so is this going to be a special meeting, do I have to post it eighteen hours, or can we just update our regular meeting schedule?
Kind of a hybrid, you, you gotta post it within, just the fact that the date's been changed within three days of
Okay.
Today's meeting, and then post it within eighteen hours, so, so I'd stick the agenda on
Okay, so I should call it a special meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
But I, but I'm reading the statutes, somebody gave us uh, did I misunderstand, we can't conduct business at a special meeting?
We can't.
Unless it's agenda.
Wouldn't, wouldn't add anything, you'd, you'd, you'd put the topics as part of the special meeting of ju- agenda that's posted.
Okay.
For the public to know whether they should bother coming.
So we can't add anything at the last minute.
Right.
Unless we
I see that everybody there.
Right.
Yes.
And around, around that, is if everybody showed up the full board, then you can add, uh, then you, items to a special meeting, yeah.
Oh, we know we can't do that.
Yeah.
Okay. So then I'd entertain a motion to reschedule our, our special meeting for February thirteenth at three PM.
So moved.
There's a motion on the table, is there support? Support. Crow, yeah, support by call for their discussions, seeing none. Uh.
Do you have to take a roll call?
Yeah, because it would have an expenditure. Roll call, please.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Paulie.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Clerk Palavich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Crow.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Uh, moving forward, I was actually, um, looking to propose, uh, budget meeting dates, um, but it makes more sense to actually conduct, uh, and pick those dates at the February meeting, I've already, I will send out a an itinerary of potential dates, um, but given the consideration that I don't want to have um, a portion of a, a budget discussion in February and not be able to reconvene and discuss bud- or our budget until March, it makes more sense to wait until March to have my hopes are one budget session should be able to, uh, conclude our, our, our business, but I would like to have two dates, so I'll present two dates at the subsequent meeting on the thirteenth.
Do you think we can, go ahead. Do you want everybody, if there's certain dates they can't make it, to send you those?
Yeah, I mean, I know that
Last week of
The twenty-ninth is, or the twenty-sixth on your outer.
I, yeah, I'm going to be on the road.
Because I normally scheduled meeting on the twenty, or is on March twenty-fifth.
Um, I can do the twenty fifth.
So probably
Is that when we have our hearing? The budget hearing?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so that would
So the budget would be set by then?
That will have it set by then, I'm looking at the, uh, I have opportunities the first, second, and third week, so I'll shoot out, if you, if you know you have dates that, uh, are completely off the books, please, uh, email me, uh, independently, so that we can, I can narrow down that field and get your, uh, potential dates.
Did you say the tw- March twenty-fifth is our budget hearing date, that's that, or not?
Right now, that is our normally scheduled meeting, and in historic fashion, that's what, when, when we've always conducted back-to-back meetings, is having a normal, regularly scheduled, getting out, conducting our budget hearing, or vice versa, actually. Um, so it'll be it'll be a full docket at that point. So, again, if you have dates that are completely incompatible, uh, the first, second, and third week, email me i- independently, and I'll, I'll converse with the clerk, and we will put together, uh,
Is that in March, you said first?
Yeah.
First or third week?
First, second, and third, I'd like to have it well done in advance, that way when we walk into our, uh, the meeting on the twenty-fifth, um, there's no real discussion needed. Okay, moving forward. Um, is the resolution regarding the adoption of their, uh, joint Alpena area recreation plan. Um, this is actually, uh, uh, second year that we've done a, a joint, uh, well, the second time that we've done a joint rec plan, uh, this time it's been increased to include Alpena County, uh, the city of Alpena, uh, and the three additional townships have been in that agreement since we did it the last, uh, five-year cycle. So at this time, uh, do you have anything to add to that, other than?
Nope. Uh. It seems pretty self-explanatory, and the planning commission did its work, so this finalizes the process.
Yeah. So at this point in time, I would look for a motion to adopt the resolution for the Alpena, uh, area joint recreation.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion on the table, is there support?
No support.
It's been moved and supported for their discussion. Seeing none, uh, roll call please.
Trustee Paulie.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Clerk Palavich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Crow.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Uh, moving forward, the next reservation at hand, which is, um, and look, borrow, would you like that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We, um, previously in two thousand and eighteen, January of two thousand and eighteen, we had a, um, policy for over short adjustments when we collect tax payments, and, um, I just updated it, and I'm bringing it to the board just to because it's updated compared to what it was in two thousand and eighteen, things have changed, we accept payments in more than just mail, and, um, basically the verbiage is that if we receive a payment for an incorrect amount, sometimes they pay, customer will pay over five dollars or under five dollars, and if it falls in that threshold, it, it's just a wa- a wash, so, um, that's what this resolution is, if you want me to read it, I can, but otherwise, it just
I, I
Yeah, but I was just gonna say, it sounds like if it's, if it's an overpayment, that if, if the taxpayer wants the money, you send them the money.
This, this will it's a over-under, it's a wash, that's what this, we did this in two thousand and eighteen, basically it balances out at the end, but it doesn't pay to pay somebody for their time and to make a letter or do a check.
No, I understand that, just that what it says here is that that overpayment of taxes totaling five dollars or less shall be handled by the treasurer in accordance with the generally accepted regional tax collection practices. What does that mean?
Yeah, I didn't
Yeah, that was one of my questions as well, who's generally accepted regional tax?
Is it generally accepted that if you overpay it?
I think it is generally accepted, it's true, like a lot of my, um, my Michigan Townships Association or the Michigan Municipal Treasurers Association, I think a lot of them use these types of resolutions.
Trustee Reiner.
Why would it not carry over either way?
Because we can't carry over money. Because we can't carry
So you can't give them a credit on their next tax?
No, we can't. Because I
And you can't make, make a deficit on their next tax bill of forty-five cents.
No, so there's people, I mean, it, it's a wash.
What if someone requests it?
Well, if they requested it, I mean, I'm sure I could make the decision to refund them that, but it's
Those little checks don't get cash, they're a nightmare.
And they hang out there, I mean
Forever.
Trustee Paulie.
So when my tax bill comes, I can be five dollars short and get away with it.
Yes. Or if you pay five dollars Or if you pay five dollars over.
Um, among my my other question is, how often does this happen?
Not very often.
I can't imagine.
It doesn't. I mean, people pay their bills.
Yeah.
And I mean, if they owe. Five dollars and one cent or more, they're getting a ladder and we're doing a ladder and do, yes.
I guess.
Interesting. What about what what happened to petty cash?
We don't have petty cash.
What do you mean we don't have? But I've heard about petty cash.
There's some pennies on the, we we don't have petty cash. Petty cash in a long time. We have a drawer with four hundred dollars in it that we have.
No, petty cash.
We don't have petty.
Cash you keep, and then if someone needs to go to the store and spend six dollars on something. It comes out of petty cash. You do a check once petty cash gets down. We have never had petty cash since I've been here.
Okay, not just the little box over here.
No, there's some pennies on in the little bowl on the counter where somebody.
Pick a penny, need a penny.
Take penny, need a penny. Need a five?
It's just a way of spending excess time. Messing around with this stuff.
I mean, I don't have any problem. I just, I I don't like the the generally accepted regional tax collection practice. I don't.
Tim, do you, I mean, Tim helped me with.
They were deferring to your experience and. What you've been doing the last.
Right.
So if five or six other townships do five or six different things and we have. No, nothing generally accepted.
Well, there's probably a lot more than five or six townships.
Well, I I mean, I. Uh, it was just a little inconsistent with. With when you said it was just a wash.
Um, I'm just, I'm saying it basically ends up being a wash in the end.
Well, in in general, it is, but.
Yeah, but if it's if it's five bucks to the guy that wants five bucks, it's not a wash.
So I guess that is about.
People overpay their taxes. People are pretty good.
We're gonna know.
And then I wonder about mortgage companies that.
And those are accepted.
They're want their money back.
Mortgage companies pay.
Yeah, I'm sure they do. I can't imagine this is a big issue.
It's not a big issue. We're making it a bigger issue than it is.
Sorry, take a more time.
Yeah.
My checks are right here.
What do you mean?
Well, how many refunds do you give a year?
Not for five over under. I mean, we don't do very many. If if somebody gets a refund, it's because the taxpayer pays first. And if the if the mortgage company pays second, the mortgage company gets the refund for the whole amount of the tax. Or if somebody overpays, sometimes we do refunds. If there's a veteran's exemption or a P R E exemption, somebody will get a refund.
Do you think we do fifty a year?
Probably not. Yeah, plus I do all my distribution checks.
Then why are we changing?
Because this was in place in two thousand eighteen. It's just updating the resolution.
That wasn't moved though.
Because originally it didn't talk about. In two thousand eighteen, it didn't mention that many taxpayer mortgage companies and others pay the taxes by personal or bank check. Or money order via the US Post Office. Now we also have delivery company services. We have a Dropbox. Those are added into the resolution now. Where they weren't in there before. It's just a little tweaking.
But that also adds in that the five dollars are gonna be a wash.
I'm not, it does not say it's a wash in this resolution. Do you want me to read the resolution?
I know, it's just that last paragraph.
Yeah.
Pretty straightforward.
Then I don't know.
Well, I have questions too.
It's fine.
I mean. Because generally accepted regional tax collection practices is just seem seemingly just here at Charter Township of Albuquerque.
Tim, do you want to recommend a change in verbiage on the last?
Well, we could change it to um. I mean, your practice. Rather than the regional. Generally accepted Charter Township of Alpena Treasurer Tax Collection Practices.
What, where are you adding that in there?
And that be it further resolve the last paragraph.
Generally accepted. Town Charter Township of.
Generally accepted past. Past collection practices. Of the Charter Township of Alpena Treasurer.
Collection practices. Yeah.
Do you have a recommendation?
Call the question.
Yeah.
Pardon me?
Call the question.
I don't know.
Any further discussion?
I'll make a motion. We approve this resolution as presented or with the change, I'm sorry, with the change recommended by Attorney Yalvin.
And could you, just for the record, please read uh the modification to the last?
I'll read the two of be it resolved paragraphs. Therefore, be it resolved that the Charter Township of Alpena Treasurer will not request a secondary payment. Due of any tax amounts totaling five dollars or less, once the primary payment has been received and. Be it further resolved that overpayments of taxes totaling five dollars or less shall be handled by the treasurer in accordance with. Accepted past collection practices of the Charter Township of Alpena Treasurer.
So we have a motion on the table. Is there support?
I'll support it.
Been moved and supported for their discussion. Uh, roll call please.
Trustee Laughlin.
Yes.
Clerk Pilovich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers, yes. Trustee Crawl.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Polly.
No.
Supervisor Skibby.
No. Okay, motion pass. Uh, moving forward, uh, to item business item number six, um, and Chief, if you'd like to take the podium. Little background into the uh business item six.
All right, the uh Department of Natural Resources for years has done a, uh, well, they used to call it the V F A grant, the Volunteer Fire Assistance Grant. So there's just a spin on words. It's the same grant that the uh department has been afforded in years past. Um. This year we're proposing and we've been approved, as you can see in the paperwork, for an allotment of uh. Four thousand ninety nine, up to four thousand dollars, I'm sorry, uh, for a total project cost of eight thousand dollars. For a new washer gear extractor, uh, which will help us meet the N F A requirement of being able to wash our. Soiled gear. So anytime. We go out for any fire, any exposure, we're supposed to have a extractor washer to wash the carcinogens away from that gear. So if there's exposure to PFOS or whatever else carcinogens, that it doesn't come back and directly affect the firefighter that's wearing the gear. So um, we had this opportunity, uh, we submitted this grant. I came back to this board, I. I believe it was. October. Asking for the approval to be able to apply for the grant, uh, which I was given that. And so now we've been awarded this. This project will need to be con- concluded uh by eight one of twenty four. So in other words, this project could be forwarded into our next up uh next fiscal year. Uh, cause obviously we're having funding issues for this fiscal year. And uh therefore, I would plan that into our budget allotment for equipment. Uh, knowing that this is a matching fund grant and uh we have to allow, I've got. All the price quotes and everything. I do not have price quotes for having a plumber or electrician. Install this once we get it yet. Uh. This is just fresh off the press here, kind of, if you will. So. Uh, I've got all the prices for the actual washer itself, but I'm still seeking out different companies to give us a price of what it goes to cost to hook up. And I'm trying to find out from the manufacturers what exactly size this needs to be and that size needs to be before I can get the actual quote. And I will come back to this board with the finalized. Quotes for installation, finalized price of the washer. Uh, but we should be able to accomplish everything in this project for eight thousand dollars or less.
But that's what I was gonna ask. Is the equipment you've already priced, is that or or is that already pick up eight thousand?
So the equipment, the majority of the washers that we have priced and we're trying to. We we've, we've agreed on a certain washer and we've. Experienced about five or six different companies. They're all within a thousand dollars of one another for the exact same machine. So it's gonna be a matter of picking the the cheapest one and then finding out who can give us the best deal for hooking the the appliance up. Once it gets to the station. And that would be housed at the nor- at the south side station, uh, if that's. A question that you were gonna ask.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, if there's a fire, will the north side, he will take their gear over there?
That is correct, because right now we currently have a hose dryer system at the south side station. So we can do a little retrofitting there, uh, pulling some racks out and putting hangers in. So as soon as they wash their gear, it can be put into the hose drying rack. Uh, we'll duplicate our uh business there by being all the dry hoses and turn out gear out that at that location. So it'll be a matter of, you know, hopefully the guy can get off shift, get his stuff down there, get it washed and while he's off shift, uh, you know, until.
Yeah, well, I was, yeah, I was just waiting for the chair, but I wanted you to finish.
Okay, just so we we can have that as as expedited as quickly as possible to get them back into their gear. Cause once that stuff gets wet, it takes a good twenty four to thirty hours, just hang drying it to get it to dry out.
Well, and now that you're not getting that, whatever contaminants might be there in any where I'm sure. You got plastics burning and things like that.
Right, right.
So, um. You know, I've always been in favor of this. We talked about this years ago, or at least some time ago.
Yep, I've 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 talked about it for about two and a half years now. But we now finally have the opportunity for the state to pick up at least half of that.
Yeah.
Total for us, which would be a great opportunity to seek that funding source and and run with it.
So would a would a resolution that says up to but not to exceed eight thousand, would you think even with the installation, do you think you can put it in that?
I I I do believe that and and I and I did propose that not to exceed eight thousand in this project, of course. Knowing that I already have five or six bids uh put together. I think we have six, don't we, Jim? Different prices. Yeah, so we've got the prices for the machine. It's just a matter of, I'm gonna get uh in touch with our local plumbing companies like G and K or Henry Heating. All the different ones in our in our area that might be able to give us a quote of what it's gonna cost. But I'm just waiting for the manufacturer specs to know exactly what power sources needed and what plumbing sources needed to to get that. Get that project completed.
Do we have two twenty available?
Uh, I believe so, yes.
Trustee Laughlin. I think you just answered my question. Is this a uh two twenty, one twenty, uh? Uh, I presume it's probably a two hundred and twenty AM.
I I do believe it can be ran both ways. I think the most effective uh source is to go to the two twenty. Uh, and that would be one of those things like with the mega electric or one of the electrical companies in town. I'm not advertising for anybody here, but they're who I thought of first, uh, Thunder Bay electric. We'll we'll look for quotes from all those folks as well to have them come in.
So the the business that solely needs to be conducted tonight is to agree to this by February second. I my recommendation is that you continue to do the your due diligence and total cost and bring it back to us post April one. That way we're in the fiscal year that will have the expenditure. Otherwise, we're earmarking monies that are in next year's budget. Yeah, we haven't even approved. This makes things a little tedious from a CPA's perspective.
That was the question I was going to ask. Can we spend next year's money this year?
Why can't we make a motion to that effect?
Because we haven't approved the budget.
I understand.
And that is a lot of explaining to the CPAs why we're spending money that we have not.
So it's no harm, no foul. We're agreeing to this this proposal and the grant by February second. We meet that timeline. We have all the way until uh uh August first, September first for uh transmission and completion of the paperwork. Um, so I don't see that that would afford you greater opportunity to get the the quotes.
So you'd like them to re-present this at the.
Expenditure aspects of it. Yeah, because then you have.
I just wanted to let Laura know that we did talk to Chelsea about this.
Okay.
And it's like if we spend ARPA money in the next fiscal year, we already have that money, so it's okay to allocate that into the next fiscal year. But we're talking about revenues that we haven't even received. We can't really spend.
Thank you for that.
Doing something in this in this uh grant. Uh, the precondition of it is that it needs to be signed and returned no later than February second. So so today, we have to agree to this uh and deal with the funding later on, so.
Allocate, we're just.
Yeah, yeah, so just so long as we do that now, um, because this is excellent use of of grant money.
Right.
So you got a fifty percent match. Great.
And and I and I will point out that uh we had a prior. Grant awarding uh that this board approved to actually purchase some stuff. It wasn't carried through prior to me getting here. And. I just know the way this system works, if we fail to get our second opportunity of what we were awarded, we'll probably be way down the list. Next time we want to ask for a grant.
I I if we're looking for a motion to do this, I would I would make a motion to approve. The uh request for the two thousand twenty four infrastructure volunteer fire capacity program agreement. Uh, not to exceed uh eight thousand uh, uh, well, I guess not to exceed eight thousand dollars, even though we're gonna get a four thousand dollar match.
Yeah, and I don't think, and correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think you can add that language into your motion because we don't know, we we know we're gonna have a match of. But then we have the ancillary costs of the plumbing, electrical.
Yeah, but it's not gonna, it won't exceed eight thousand. Well, I guess it will exceed eight thousand because we're gonna get, it's a reimbursement grant.
Yeah, I I don't think the total project's gonna be over eight thousand for everything. I I don't believe it would, but that's just a guess at this point because I haven't talked to the contractor.
It's gonna be it, that'll be in the motion.
Yeah.
Uh, uh, to approve the grant request not to exceed eight thousand.
That, and I think that's plenty good.
And we have a motion.
I support.
We have support. Any further discussion? Roll call please.
Clerk Pilovich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yeah.
Trustee Crawl.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Polly.
Yes.
Trustee Laughlin.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes.
By the way, I I'm sorry, I should have added something. I noticed we're gonna need, you're gonna have a. Potentially two contractors. And in this agreement. The uh. The department. Wants to be.
I think there's four they want.
Huh?
I think there's four that they want.
Well, there's, they they want, they want proof of insurance from us, so we want to make sure that we get it from whomever we are contracted.
Exactly, yeah.
All right.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll we'll go through this with a fine tooth comb to make sure. And if I have any questions, I'll get with Supervisor Skibby and we'll probably hammer it out. My guess.
Um, and then in all actuality, that brings us right to the next business item number seven, which is ladder testing agreement, which there again falls into next fiscal.
Well, and and the issue with that is these companies fill up so rapidly. If you don't send in an agreement to get on their calendar. You're not gonna get tested.
I think we still haven't paid for last year's. Ladder testing that we approved, it's still hanging out there. Have they ever came and done the ladder?
They did the ladder testing. I could have swore I quoted that bill, but I'll double check my.
Cause it was on those that short list.
Yeah.
Said it was still hanging.
I'll I'll check into that tomorrow. I'll look at my files and I'll tell the company to make sure.
So then my my question. Back to you, Chief, is that, okay, um, once again, we can't really dedicate funds from a budget that we haven't approved. So and by also know the conundrum of getting on their 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 books to schedule it. I mean, you can't just say that we want that date and then re-present it in the April meeting when the budgets.
According, they they want, they want a contract signed. That's how they, you know. Unfortunately, that's what the, you know, let me get to their agreement here real quick.
Because I I would assume maybe just a letter stating that our fiscal year begins April one. And given the consideration that the dates that have been scheduled, I mean, a letter. From me to that company stating that we're committed to this.
Maybe the support, uh, maybe the support of this board allowing us to schedule this with the future commitment on our new fiscal year starts. That might suffice.
Make the motion to approve scheduling it. I'll make the motion to approve scheduling ladder testing.
We have a motion on the table. Uh, is there support?
What?
It's been moved and supported for their resolution.
Could it be at a cost? Could it be at at a cost not to exceed?
It, he he always could, but.
I mean, we can always do a memorandum of understanding, I would think, Tim, uh, even though that is that a committal or is that just?
It just as long as it's not a binding, you know, uh. Kind of like a letter of intent where.
Yeah. Yeah.
Is it binding or isn't it?
If you don't mind me showing, here's the price and this is how many foot of ladder that we currently have. That's what they.
Yeah, I was I was gonna run run that on my calculator.
So this isn't, no, no hose testing at all, just ladder.
Just ladder testing.
So we have a, we have motion and support uh to the motion uh to uh. Get ourselves in line for ladder testing, uh barring any further discussion, uh roll call, please.
Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Crawl.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Polly.
Yes.
Trustee Laffin.
Yes.
Clerk Lavich, supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Thank you very much.
Um, I'll make a motion to enter that the township board enter into closed session to discuss confidential written legal opinion from the attorney.
We have a motion on the table. Is there support?
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any further discussion? Saying none, roll call, please.
Trustee Crawl.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Polly.
Yes.
Trustee Laffin.
Yes.
Clerk Lavich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes, we're officially in closed session at uh six fifty P M. We are officially back in open session, uh which leads us to our second and final opportunity for public comment. There's any public uh comment online, uh please use the bottom uh cast bar under the ellipses to raise your hand. Or to send a message. Saying none, is there any public comment in person?
Hello, uh Kevin Ginter. Um, mostly my comment, oh, first of all, uh the discussion about the gear cleaning equipment. Um, I appreciate that quite a bit. There's a huge uh cancer prevention thing that's been going on in the fire service for. Uh, five to ten years and it involves way more than cleaning gear. If you're ever interested, from taking showers and types of showers and. Uh, putting your gear in bags and buying two sets of gear and nothing that includes anything other than lots of money. Um, this is my comment, uh mostly is in response to the article about the uh budget adjustments. Um, from the Alpena News. Uh, it it reads, Skibby said fire chief Mark Hanson failed to meet needed uh adjustments to his budget skewed revenues. Uh, which um. Entering the fourth quarter makes a significant def- deficit. And I I found that mostly I'm trying to be constructive in some way. But this is a comment that was posted on a Facebook Facebook response. Apparently, the Alpena Township Supervisor missed the leadership lesson, praising public. Criticizing private. In this case here, that assumes the fire chief was to blame. All the criticism and blame should be the township supervisor's fault. It's his watch, it's his control. With all the micromanaging the supervisor does, one would think he's got a handle on everything. Of course, the township government is all about crisis management because they failed to plan. And here you are uh trying to schedule another um consultation. Well, they're, um, but at the same time, they're pretty good at planning, uh giving themselves regular raises, which is really confusing. Since uh there's constant references to budgets shortfalls. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Ginter.
First, I'd like to commend the board for two milestone achievements last month, a long needed tanker and a new hire. Imagine my surprise when I opened the paper a couple of days later and the articles about budget cuts. I wonder how that happens. I'm confused. Supervisor Skibby was quoted as saying Chief Mark Hanson failed to make needed adjustments to his budget. I feel it's important to advise the budget and some facts that they may be unaware of. At a March budget meeting last year, it was Supervisor Skibby who proposed at the eleventh hour, cutting the salary account from the chief's recommendation of three hundred and thirty four thousand dollars. Down to three hundred thousand dollars, certainly within his powers, but now to characterize that as the chief's budget. Publicly in the newspaper is wrong. Furthermore, knowing the payroll account was underfunded. In contract negotiation, Supervisor Skibby went on to award larger than calculated raises. And additionally, retroactive pay back to January of the previous budget year. The board has delayed for over a year the hiring of a sixth firefighter, resulting in four hundred and fifty dollars a week and avoidable overtime. All totaling nearly thirty thousand dollar shortfall to Supervisor Skibby's underfunded underfunded payroll account. I believe it was very unethical for Supervisor Skibby to recommend a budget to the board that was balanced on paper. But knowingly deficient in actuality, even if stating the budget is a fluid document, adjustments can be made. It was the supervisor and the board that had failed to live within this payroll account. Just before Christmas, Supervisor Skibby proposed to the chief. Some transfers and directed the chief to find more. Chief Hanson sought my counsel. And I spent the better part of three days with the chief scouring accounts to find monies, which the chief did provide to Supervisor Skibby. Prior to the December meeting. We discovered numerous irregularities in the budget printouts provided. Several accounts had amended budget numbers different from what was approved by this board. Many accounts had a mysteriously decreased decreased available balance, even with no debits listed for the month. Supervisor Skibby was using available balance numbers that did not accurately reflect several known encumbrances. Or projected future spending necessary to meet some legal obligations. It turned out Supervisor Skibby, um, I apologize. Chief Hanson, appreciating the dramatic effect those budget transfers would have by rating accounts already cut and established after lengthy discussion by this board. Requested a meeting of the fire committee to discuss the matter. This was disallowed by Supervisor Skibby. Fire department grant money creates found money pile of unassigned monies within the general fund. As they were not calculated into the adopted spending plan. Were these allocated monies available? Where were they spent and why can't they be used to deal with this expected projected shortfall in Supervisor Skibby's own making? I couldn't find anything in the minutes, but I'm sure you remember voting on November eighth to fire the chief.
For your comment. No, sir, actually, I I afforded you the three minutes. You actually had several irregularities and mistruths in your statements. But I still.
True, I can back it all up right here, sir, and show it to anybody who's interested.
Wonderful. Thank you for your comment.
I wish the board would hold him to the same standard that he's holding the chief and that you by voting to fire, he didn't. Are holding the chief to.
Yeah, are we into discussion?
Yeah, we're into this.
I would just like the board to know that. The Personnel Committee had told Chief Hanson in January to hire a six person and to get ads out and.
Immediate.
And that was not done until, I think it was in September, when I posted an ad to hire someone. So that information is very incorrect. The board was not stopping a six person from being hired. The board was encouraging it. And so was the Personnel Committee.
Yeah. So to, and Lori, if you have questions, okay, sir, I'll make time because you don't have all the facts. Is there any other discussion for the good of the order? Saying none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn some of. Been moved and supported. Further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye, aye.
Those opposed, the same, leaving adjourned, seven twenty eight. Thank you very much.